Could I have a board member to the table, please? Could I ask all, could I ask everyone to be seated, please? Please be seated. This April 24, 2014, regular meeting number 18 of the Fairfax County School Board will now come to order. Please rise for the place of allegiance, a movement of silence, and the performance of the National Anthem by the Kinnear Elementary School Chamber Orchestra, under the direction of Amanda Sheetz.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, very well done. There was again Kinnear Elementary School Chamber Orchestra, under the direction of Amanda Sheetz.
Mr. Moon, I'd like to thank all the parents for bringing your children out tonight. It was lovely, and we thank you for sharing your child's talent with us.
Thank you.
Mr. Moon, I believe also Renee Miller. I didn't see Renee. There you are. Renee Miller, the principal, thank you so much. Your students were wonderful.
A few announcements before we continue tonight's meeting. The board held a closed meeting earlier this evening and certified the compliance immediately upon reconvening in public at the forum work session, which preceded tonight's regular meeting. If you would like to access tonight's agenda and related meeting documents, you can do so by going to the FCPS website, select School Board, and then Upcoming Meetings and Agendas. The meeting is also being streamed live on the FCPS website homepage. Click on Watch School Board Live. If you have signed up to speak before the board during the citizen participation, please turn in 16 copies of your remarks at this time to the deputy clerk sitting in the section to my right over there. If you would like to review a copy of the agenda and any agenda item that is being discussed tonight, that information is also on the table by the auditorium entrance. Please turn off or silence your cellphone. Let me now call on Mr. Ash for further announcements.
May 5 through 9 is Teacher Appreciation Week. Every day, over 16,000 teachers in Fairfax County Public Schools demonstrate their personal and professional dedication to providing an excellent education for the children in our community. Our teachers are committed to ensuring that all children develop their full potentials for academic achievement. Teachers are influential in fostering their, in their students, both helpful self-concepts and a sense of civic responsibility. Fairfax County Public Schools values the skills, creativity, and professionalism that characterize our teachers. May is Asian and Pacific American Heritage Month. Americans of Asian and Pacific ancestry have made significant contributions to the history and development of the United States in many fields of endeavor, such as science, commerce, the arts, and the humanities. The Fairfax County School Board recognizes that an understanding of these contributions should be an integral part of the year-round education of all students. Since 1992, the President of the United States has proclaimed May to be Asian and Pacific American Heritage Month, and has chosen this month to pay tribute to the generations of Asian Pacific and Pacific Islanders who have enriched Americans' heritage and are instrumental in its future success. May 7 is School Nurse Day. School Nurse Day was established in 1972 to foster a better understanding of the role of school nurses in the educational setting. This annual event recognizes the contributions that our school nurses make every day to improve the health and success of our nation's children. This year's theme, "The School Nurse: Caring for Others, Caring for Ourselves", reflects the significant roles that school nurses have in healthcare, in their school communities, as well as in modeling health and resiliency. School nursing is a specialized practice of professional nursing that advances the health and well-being of students and is an integral part of a quality school health program. School nurses promote health, safety, prevention, and wellness, intervene with actual and potential health problems, and provide case management services. They are an invaluable connection, a bridge connecting healthcare providers, public health, and families. The school system works closely with the Fairfax County Health Department to provide quality services to the children of Fairfax County Public Schools, and recognizes May 7 as School Nurse Day in Fairfax County.
Thank you, Mr. Ash. The next item of business is Recognition of Better Hearing and Speech Month, and let me call on Mr. Dan Stork.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. It is absolutely my pleasure to recognize Better Hearing and Speech Month. It's a very personal issue for me because that's frankly how I met my wife, was she's a speech and hearing therapist at the time. So we, we got, I got a chance to see her at work, and at that point in time, she worked with a lot of children who could not speak at all. So she worked with language boards and such to, to help them learn how to speak, really how to communicate better. So it was really more of that. So speech and hearing goes really the whole spectrum, not only just learning to improve speech, but also to help people communicate at all. So I, it's a special recognition. And the other part of that, the regrettable side of that, is as I turn a little bit older, my hearing is getting a little bit tougher to, to hear. And then some of my colleagues, I tend to not hear as well as other colleagues. I'm not sure why that is, but... It must be my old age, but I mean... But regardless, we, we recognize the absolute importance of your work with our students every single day. And this is a minor, a small way to do that, so. Since 1927, the American Speech Language Hearing Association has celebrated Better Hearing and Speech Month every year in May. The theme this year is Identify the Signs, an effort to educate the public about the warning signs of communication disorders. The annual event provides opportunities to promote services that can improve the quality of life for those who experience problems with speaking and listening. An estimated 42 million people have communication disorders, and they impact one in 10 families. Currently, Fairfax County Public Schools provides speech and language services to more than 10,000 students. Audiologyists and special education teachers also serve more than 500 deaf and hard-of-hearing students in class-based programs via base school itinerant services and early childhood programs. FCPS annually observes and celebrates Better Hearing and Speech Month, encourages all citizens in our school community to recognize the efforts, dedication, and skills of the speech-language clinicians, audiologists, and teachers of students who are deaf and hard-of-hearing. With that, I'd like to call on Ms. Reed.
Thank you, Mr. Stork. It is my pleasure to introduce a very special student to you today, a local star who has been featured in today's Washington Post. Kathryn, would you please come up to the lectern? Ladies and gentlemen, this is Kathryn Polowski, a second-grade student at Timber Lane Elementary School. Kathryn is served by deaf and hard-of-hearing services in Fairfax County Public Schools, and has been named the 2014 inaugural Walk for Hearing Ambassador by the Hearing Loss Association of America. In her role, Kathryn will help raise awareness for hearing loss and the Walk for Hearing Program. Kathryn began advocating for herself at a very young age, even younger than she is now, when she wrote a song requesting that the popular doll company, American Girl, make hearing aids for their dolls so they could be just like her. Now, American Girl dolls can be personalized with a hearing aid in one or both ears. Sweet. You rock, Kathryn. In 2012, Kathryn formed the team Friends of Fairfax County to create awareness of hearing loss and advocate for the 500-plus deaf and hard-of-hearing students in Fairfax County Public Schools. Last year, through the Walk for Hearing event, she raised over $3,500, of which 40% was donated to the Northern Virginia Resource Center, which serves those in Fairfax County with hearing loss. This year, Kathryn is excited to once again participate in the Washington DC Walk for Hearing event. Kathryn has set her team's fundraising goal at $5,000 and will help determine how those funds are used to support students in FCPS. I now invite Kathryn to say a few words about her role as the ambassador and her ideas for continuing to raise awareness of hearing loss. Kathryn?
My name is Kathryn Polowski, and I'm a second grader at Timber Lane Elementary School. I am a lot like other second graders you meet, but I was born with a hearing loss. I started wearing hearing aids when I was three years old. Before I leave for school, I have extra responsibilities to put my hearing aid on and give, and get ready. Every day when I arrive to my classroom, I put my receivers on and give the teacher the microphone and do a listening check, unpack, and get ready to learn. Thanks to my hearing teacher and audiologist, I know how to hand my FM to different teachers and charge it before I get on the bus. I have learned more about the process of hearing and about my hearing loss with the help of my teachers. I have also learned how to advocate for myself at school and educate others about hearing loss. I also work with a speech teacher who has helped me learn how to say things in a clear way. I am a, I am a very active eight-year-old. I love to write my own songs and sing for people. But this year, one of the things I am most proud of is being named the National Ambassador of the Hearing Loss Association of America. With Walk for Hearing, with the HLA partnership, it's my goal to raise awareness about other kids just like me with a hearing loss. I will be traveling to eight walks across the United States in interviewing kids just like me and publishing our conversations in the HLA magazine. I am so excited about my new role and truly hope that the Fairfax County Schools communicate will join me at the Washington DC Walk for Hearing on October 25th. As we raise awareness and connect all students in Fairfax County Public Schools that have a hearing loss, thank you for letting me share my story, and I look forward to seeing you at the Walk for Hearing, Walk for Hearing in October. My name is Kathryn Polowski, and this is why I walk. Thank you.
Kathryn? Kathryn?
Kathryn, Kathryn, would you mind introducing your mother and your brothers that are here with you tonight?
Um, my mom is, well, my mom's name is Megan. My oldest brother is Alexander. My second-oldest brother is Nicholas. My little sister is Lizzie. And my aunt is Aunt Katie. My cousin is Maddie.
Kathryn, if you could join us up front for pictures, we'd sure appreciate it.
Family?
Yes, we could all go up the front for pictures. And any other members of the audience who would like to join us for pictures, honoring and celebrating Better Hearing and Speech Month, we'd sure love to have you join us.
Okay, here we go. Everybody look right here. Okay, very nice. And all my friends up on the stage, please. There you go. Come on up. Yeah, just... Hey, Megan. Yeah, Megan, if you don't mind. To you, it's fine. And the same on the other side. And we can go on the other side here, too. Just go on the other side there. Just go on the other side there. We could do two rows in the back, it's fine. Two rows standing, two rows.
Can they, can they sit in chairs?
No, just, just everyone stand. All right, Marty, hop in, and we're ready to go. Hey, everybody, everybody look right here, please. Here we go, count three, one, two, three. And again. Congratulations. Thank you.
Could I ask those who joined us in picture-taking to stay in the auditorium for a while? Stay in the auditorium. Go back to your seats. If they could stay with us a little longer, I would appreciate it. Let me now recognize Mr. Verka.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, that was a wonderful speech and wonderful work by Kathryn. I'd like to raise awareness about something that I didn't know about 20 years ago, and it is a condition called sudden hearing loss. I had full functioning here in both of my ears until I turned around 40, and overnight, I lost the hearing in my left ear, and I thought, oh, well, I've just got some earwax and stuff, and it'll go away. And about three or four days later, I finally went to the doctor, and it was really too late to take action on that. Although it is a treatable condition with, I think they use steroids or something to kind of stimulate the nerves and so forth. So I just bring this up because I just want to make sure everybody is aware that, you know, if you, if you wake up in the morning and you can't hear, you know, think, which I didn't do, and I often don't do, but think that this is, this is serious. I mean, imagine if you woke up and you couldn't see out of one eye. I mean, you would head to the doctor immediately. So again, this condition is called sudden hearing loss, and if you lose your hearing, take it seriously.
Thank you, Mr. Verka. Next item of business is Resolution Supporting the Unified Prevention Coalition and Its Parents Who Host Lose the Most Campaign. And let me call on Mr. Narcofax for the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Before I begin reading the, the resolution, may I invite Sarah Froend, Diane Eckert, and Samara Kimmelman up to the podium, please? And as you come down, I, I want to say that I am very honored to present this resolution to a most important community partner whose mission it is to create a safe and drug-free community. I have attended United Prevention, Unified Prevention Coalition, I'm sorry, forums many times as a parent and as a school board member, and I thank you so much for the important information that you're providing for our community. Thank you so much. And now let me read the resolution. Whereas 65% of underage youth say they get alcohol from family and friends, even though it is illegal in Virginia for a person under 21 years of age to consume or possess alcohol, and it is illegal for an adult to provide alcohol to a person under 21 years of age. And whereas alcohol is the most commonly-used illegal drug by Fairfax County students, and underage alcohol use is associated with traffic crashes and fatalities, other drug use, violence, gang involvement, rape, depression, and suicide, and emotional failure. And whereas the 2012-2013 Fairfax County Youth Survey reported that 35% of our high school seniors and 19% of our 10th graders had consumed alcohol in the last 30 days, and that 18.2% of seniors had engaged in binge drinking in the last two weeks. And whereas the United Prevention Coalition of Fairfax County, Unified, excuse me, Prevention Coalition of Fairfax County, an independent, nonprofit organization of over 60 collaborative partners, including school officials, county government agencies, concerned residents, students, and community groups, has been instrumental in addressing underage drinking and binge drinking, and is now in the eighth year of a campaign known as "Parents Who Host Lose the Most: Don't Be a Party to Teenage Drinking", to educate parents and to increase awareness of and compliance with Virginia underage drinking laws. And whereas prevention efforts, including parents talking with their teens and modeling appropriate behavior, are critical, particularly during upcoming prom and graduation season, now for, be it resolved that the Fairfax County School Board supports the Unified Prevention Coalition of Fairfax County and recognizes the month of May 2014 as Parents Who Host Lose the Most Month in Fairfax County. I so move.
Moved by Mr. Narcofax. Is there a second? Second by Ms. Hines. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hand. The vote is unanimous, the motion passes.
Thank you. And now, before we take pictures, I would like to invite Carolina Sosa, a junior at Westfield High School, and the Youth Council Acting President, who will say a few words on behalf of the coalition.
Before Carolina speaks, I want to bring to your attention that she was just written up in the Washington Post Magazine section for her involvement with the FCPS Scholars Society, and that we couldn't have a more hard-working, committed, motivational student to be leading this group than Carolina.
Thank you, Chairman Moon and board members, for allowing me the opportunity to speak to you today about the Unified Prevention Coalition of Fairfax County, also known also known as UPC and as Youth Council. My name is Carolina Sosa. I am a junior at Westfield High School and the Youth Council President. I am proud to say that the Youth Council has expanded representation from 13 to 17 high schools and from 15 to 30 members. The UPC's Parents Who Host Lose the Most Public Awareness Campaign is beginning its eighth year with your support. It is important to recognize the need for parents to supervise teen parties in their homes and not allow underage drinking. By providing a non-emergency phone number on the Parents Who Host banners and fact cards, we hope to increase the partnership between parents and the police in keeping teens alcohol-free. Youth Council members provide invaluable perspectives when participating on the UPC Underage Drinking and Binge Drinking Work Group in order to effectively develop and implement programs that target youth. As youth leaders and mentors, we see and hear far too much about underage drinking and drinking and driving. We believe we can make a difference and want to see a change in our generation when it comes to these issues. Thank you for this opportunity to speak to you.
Thank you, Ms. Sosa. Now, if you would please join us, we'd be, love to take a picture with you.
The Fairfax County Police Department, um, is with us this evening. They are one of our chief partners. And Jessie Ellis from Fairfax County Government, its new prevention manager, has also made the time to join us.
Let me call on Mr. Verka.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. Um, I would just like to mention in this context that, um, I was one of the, my and my wife were some of those parents who did call to the parents who were hosting, uh, parties with our children, and my kids hated it. They were embarrassed that we were making these calls. And your fear as a parent that you're alienating yourself from your kids and yada, yada, yada. But it sends a very important message to the kids that you care, and it's extremely important. And what I want you all to know, parents, is that our kids still love us. We have great conversations. It did not destroy the relationships. And I do think, I, I really want to encourage everybody to make sure that you are making those phone calls to the other parents. It's the right thing to do.
Okay, thank you. With that, we'll go to the next, uh, item of business, which is a resolution commemorating the 60th anniversary of the historic U.S. Supreme Court decision in Brown versus the Board of Education. Let me call on Ms. Hines.
In May, we will commemorate that very important anniversary. Equity in educational opportunity continues to be our challenge nationally and here in Fairfax County public schools. So it's fitting that we recognize this landmark decision as a reminder of our fundamental mission as educators. So I'll read the resolution. Resolution of the Fairfax County School Board commemorating the 60th anniversary of the historic U.S. Supreme Court decision in Brown versus the Board of Education. Whereas, public education is essential to an informed citizenry, the foundation of our democratic society, and provides the gateway to opportunity our nation's promised to all. Regardless of race, religion, ethnic background, or economic circumstance, access to public education is a fundamental civil right in a democracy. And whereas, on May 17, 1954, in an historic and unanimous decision, the United States Supreme Court in Brown versus Board of Education ruled that public education is subject to the equal protection provisions of the United States Constitution. The court based its decision on the premise that to separate children according to their race was unfair, diminishing their hopes and their future aspirations. And whereas, the court's pronouncement in Brown versus Board of Education validated the struggle and remarkable actions of countless Americans who challenged the destructive effects of segregation in our society through peaceful, lawful means. The contributions of civil rights leaders and volunteers, parents and students, are recognized for it is only through their courage, conviction, and sacrifices that Brown versus Board of Education became a reality. And whereas, the court's decision has had a profound, significant, and beneficial impact on all aspects of life in the United States and continues to inspire our nation's children, regardless of age, gender, race, ethnicity, religion, sexual orientation, disability, or economic status, to appreciate the value of public education and public service as a means to further the objectives of democracy, justice, and equality. And whereas, on the date of May 17, students in our county's public schools are encouraged to mark the anniversary of Brown versus Board of Education with appropriate ceremony and remembrance, and to foster a personal commitment to democracy through essays, creative arts, lectures, research and writing, community projects, and other activities. Now therefore, be it resolved, the Fairfax County School Board recognizes that May 17, 2014 marks the 60th anniversary of the landmark U.S. Supreme Court decision in Brown versus Board of Education, and that the unanimous 1954 Supreme Court decision is a touchstone to further a nationwide appreciation for the advancement of democratic principles through our system of law and justice. I so move.
Moved by Ms. Hines. Is there a second? Second by Ms. Evans. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hand. The vote is unanimous, the motion passes. Okay, and next, we have recognition, recognition of a school nutrition employee week. I would very miss if I didn't recognize a former school board member in the audience. Tina Hohn, would you like to stand to be recognized? Thanks for joining us this evening. And let me go to, uh, Mr. McElven.
Thank you, Mr. Moon. So, at this board table, we often talk about our, the stress of our teachers specifically, which is certainly, uh, true. But I, I can think of no group of employees that has been under more stress over the past year than our FNS employees. And a lot of that is due to the fact that the, um, the, the federal government came out with a new meal pattern. They've had to adjust to that. They've had to, um, listen to the board, have some very, um, tough discussions about the future of our, um, food and nutrition program. But, um, it's, um, been wonderful, um, to continue to see the wonderful work that our, our Food and Nutrition Services employees do, um, under the, the, um, great leadership of, uh, Penny McConnell. Um, and it's, it's been wonderful to see their commitment to continuous improvement as a system. And we're so excited about the changes to come in the system. So we really do thank you for all the work that you do. And, um, with that, I will read the resolution for, uh, School Nutrition Employee Week. Caring, trained, thoughtful, professional, dedicated. These are just a few words that describe today's school nutrition professional. School nutrition employees in FCPS demonstrate daily their professional commitment to providing students with nutrition, nutritious menu choices that reflect current research and meet the dietary guidelines for Americans. School nutrition employees must balance many roles and follow numerous federal, state, and local regulations to ensure safe and healthy meals are available in schools. They are trained sanitation and food safety experts and must manage financially self-sufficient programs. School nutrition professionals also provide nutrition education to students as well as healthy catering services to their communities. They use their creativity to make the cafeteria a fun and welcoming place all year long and perform their jobs each day because they care passionately about the children they serve. FCPS school nutrition employees are committed to imparting food and nutrition knowledge and skills to students, using the school cafeteria as a nutrition laboratory and are influential in preparing students to learn. With that, I'd like to invite all, um, FNS employees to come forward, and we will take a picture with all of you. And as you saw before, we might have to accommodate some of you on the stage because just so many of you came out. So thank you so much.
You're the best.
Pod will take a three-minute recess.
Oh, my God. Oh, my God. Where you been? Around here. I miss you for Christmas. I didn't get nothing.
I know.
I was starving. Come out to Marshall. I need you to come.
I know. I asked her.
And he said, hey, I don't see.
Yeah? You don't change for nothing. Twenty years, you look the same. That's all right. You know you're a nice lady. Nice family, nice lady. I lost my class. There, there. You want to go to Panera?
They wanted to.
Whatever you want to do. Oh, those coupons are for Panera, by the way. Okay, so look, she, don't get mad.
Before he goes away, let me recognize, let me recognize Mr. Harris Latif, the, uh, next year's student representative to the school board. Good to see you. Look forward to seeing you again at the Laney High School on Saturday. Uh, next item of business is citizen participation. My laptop is a little slow, so please bear with me. This should be included in the next year's budget.
Underfunded.
We are underfunded. Okay, realize that, all right? Next order of business is, next item of business is citizen participation. Fairfax County citizens who would like to address the school board should arrange to be placed on the speakers list by signing up online at www.fcpse.edu or by calling the school board office at 571-4231075. If the concern is a group concern, please consider appointing a spokesperson, and while the spokesperson is speaking, those in support may stand to show their support. The school board will not hear statements involving issues that have been scheduled for public hearings, such as capital improvement program, budget and boundaries, or personal attacks on any person. Complaints regarding individual students or school-based employees should not be raised at public meetings. Any such concern should be directed to the appropriate school principal or other school officials. Citizens are encouraged to write to school board on any school-related topic. Speakers are requested to limit their remarks to not more than thirty minutes and provide at least sixteen copies of their presentation for distribution to the board. Tonight, four citizens have signed up to address the board: Steven Greenberg, Tina Hohn, Sharice Glassman, and Kimberly Adams. Starting with Mr. Greenberg.
Dr. Garza, Chairman Moon, STEAM school board members, the distinguished Mr. Ash. My name is Steve Greenberg. I come before you this evening representing some of the finest educators in this country, the educators in the Fairfax County Federation of Teachers in regards to 2.06 resolution commemorating the sixtieth anniversary, Brown Board of Education. I've also come to agree with Ms. Reed that Catherine rocks. You guys ever wanna hear a real speech? That was it. I appreciate this resolution is on the docket tonight. Thank you to this board for acknowledging this significant event, one that has had tremendous impact on our public education system and our children and should continue to do so. FCFT and its members will proudly honor the sixtieth anniversary on May seventeenth. Actually, we honor it daily as we educate all of our children so they can reach their fullest potential. I almost missed that this was coming up with the budget and all-day work sessions and problems at schools and school calendar and teacher workload, and then there's mental health issues for students and latest heart schools. Stop! No, no, no. Not this time. This is too important. We run like mat-a-rat in a maze. I can't even talk it so fast. We need to slow down. We're running in a circle. We have no time to think, feel, consider carefully. Teachers need time to plan and think, then they teach their best. School board members also need time to think about important things. Our community needs time. Our students need time. There's nothing more important than us all taking some time to consider what this means to us, to our students, to our future. I need to give you some time tonight. I know you don't have it. Let's do this together, but let's do it separately now. I'll conclude my comments after you have some time to reflect. That wasn't enough. We haven't done enough. We all know it. This is about black and white and all the colors of the spectrum, but it's about more. It's about opportunity and fairness and equity. It's about promises kept and promise of the future. It is political. It's cultural. It's economic. It's really important. What this resolution means to all of us. It means action, to me. Hope. It's time. Action. I thought a lot about this speech tonight. They're just words. We need action. I need you to help me. We all need your thoughts, plans, ideas for more action. Our children need us to work together, to honor daily the promise made by this resolution. I hope the time we made tonight to consider results in even better actions. I look forward to your board comments tonight, and I do want to tell you as I leave that the Fairfax County Federation T-shirt always have been and we always will be very proud members of the Coalition of the Silence. Their work is so important. Thank you all. Have a good evening.
The next speaker is Tina Hohn to be followed by Sharice Glassman and Kimberly Adams.
I'm still befuddled by the hug. School board members, Dr. Garza, staff, thank you tonight for the very moving resolution in support of Brown versus Board of Education, and I would add, and its progeny. People don't realize that Brown versus Board of Education was one of a set of cases. Ground zero for the desegregation movement was actually Virginia. It was a case in Prince Edward County. What people also fail to realize that in 1954, when the promise of the Brown versus Board of Education decision came out, that in this Commonwealth, Governor Byrd shut down the public school system rather than integrate it. That period of massive resistance lasted a decade, and in 1964, when it ended, that was also the year that gifted and talented programs were introduced into the public school system. Coincidence? We'll see. The first time I testified before the school board was ten years ago. It was the fiftieth anniversary of Brown versus Board of Education and days after the TJ admissions numbers had come out. Then and now, the numbers were deplorable. Our complaint against this school system over the admissions of students to TJ and the lack of diversity in the pipeline that feeds into TJ, our gifted and talented program, is our commitment to Brown versus Board of Education and its promise. It is a promise that has not yet been kept, and it is a promise that I believe that this school system is capable of keeping. I push this school system hard because as a former school board member, I know exactly what you are capable of. This is the greatest county in this country, and the school system can be the greatest school system in this country. But until the flaws that exist in TJ admissions, in our gifted and talented programs, the disparities that exist across our schools in terms of some kids having computers in schools and others not, some kids having computer programming classes in schools and others not, some kids having algebra in eighth grade and others not, until the disparities in discipline disappear, until the disparities in high school graduation rates disappear, I cannot celebrate and the Coalition of the Silence will not celebrate the greatness of Fairfax County. We will celebrate the promise of Fairfax County Public Schools, and we will do everything we can to help you and to remind you that your greatness depends upon keeping the promise of Brown versus Board of Education and the struggles of the kids who are in this county and this Commonwealth and in counties across the state. Thank you.
Thank you. We have, next speaker is Sharice Glassman to be followed by Kimberly Adams. Ms. Adams.
Good evening, Chairman Moon, members of the board, Dr. Garza. My name is Kimberly Adams, and I stand before you as the president of the Fairfax Education Association, and I'm speaking with you on the resolution commemorating the sixtieth anniversary of the Supreme Court decision on Brown versus Board of Education. As a member of my professional association, I'm always proud of my colleagues, the ones I work with and those particularly who came before us. The honor I have tonight is to commend the staff and especially the students who fought in Virginia and other places in our country to strike down the separate but equal ruling. My experience in the Virginia Education Association has taught me much about our rich history in Virginia and places like Farmville, Virginia. Barbara Johns was a tenth-grade student who knew that she and her fellow students should not have to hunger for textbooks and gymnasiums of the white students down the road. Teachers told their students there that they could fly just as high as anyone else. So, why shouldn't they? Barbara Johns led more than 400 students from her school in a march on the school board to begin a movement that would eventually add to the strength of the Brown versus Board case. I quote her words tonight. "Today, I'm gonna ask you to stand with me. We have to walk just as proud as anyone else, and that's what we're going to do. We're gonna walk out of this school over to the courthouse. Do you hear me? We're gonna walk with our heads held high and go to the school board. Are you with me? We're gonna walk out on a strike. Yes, a strike, I said. And we won't come back until we get a real school with a gymnasium and library and whole books. And we will get them, and it'll be grand. Are you with me? Are we gonna walk? Are we gonna fly?" I'd like to take this opportunity to show a brief video, which I wasn't able to get uploaded this evening, so I'll get you a link, to the Moton Museum in Farmville, Virginia, which honors the courage and sacrifice of Prince Edward County, Virginia students, their families, and their leading role in moving America forward from segregation toward integration. This project has been partially funded by the VEA and the NEA, and it's a powerful museum, a place for students to visit and learn more about the history of the civil rights movement here in our schools. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes the citizen participation. Next, we have a student representative matters. Mr. Ash.
There we go. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, yesterday was the Student Advisory Council's last meeting. So, I was there with Harris, who I'm happy is joining us for yet another meeting, and we covered a variety of issues, basically looking at the year-end review and with the hope of trying to provide some guidance for Dr. Garza and the cluster superintendents who actually were able to attend. And we met yesterday and got to have short conversa, or actually fairly long conversation about the state of the clusters and the state of the school system as a whole. A couple topics kept coming up. One was mental wellness. That is, I've spoken a little about that before, but that's just something that I'm going to try to keep fresh, and I hope Harris will keep fresh because that's something that we have to, it's not something that we can do once and patch up and it'll be good. It's something that we have to make a habit. And that also feeds into the workload issue, which for students, that really needs to, we really need to look at how much work are we actually giving our students and how much is effective for students? There was a very interesting recent study that basically said that past a certain point, homework is detrimental to the, to the learning of a student and to the performance of a student. And one of the specific topics that came up yesterday was, that was just thrown out, was homework over breaks, something very easy, something very easy to start with. As teachers treat it as if, oh, they're going away for a week, we can give them a week's worth of work when it's supposed, when it's supposed to be a break and relaxing. Just one, one instance of many where we can look at what we're doing and how we can make it easier on the students. Another topic that kept coming up very often were the APIB testing fees. And once again, this year's, this is a tough budget year, and I'm sure we're all unhappy that those fees have to go into place. But it's something to keep, keep in mind in years going forward that that should always be a priority to get worked back into the budget because it's one of the things we don't want, it's one of the things contributing to the achievement gap. We don't wanna give them more reasons not to take a difficult class. We want, we wanna make it as easy as possible and encouraging as possible for under, for previously underachieving students, give them an incentive to try instead of just putting up barriers. Finally, the school start times issue came up, and I haven't had a chance to review all the discussions that went on at yesterday's board meeting, which I'm sorry I couldn't make it to. But the students were somewhat split. Some, there are many who believe it'll be detrimental to the school schedule and what time they'll get home, and many don't understand that it won't actually shift that much what time, depending on the option, of course, what time they get home and what time they actually, especially with sports and whatnot. So, the important part with students, I believe, is no matter what the decision is, is just education. And that leads me into my final point is, may, an objective for the board should be opening up and maintaining a two-way communication with students beyond just a monthly meeting. It can, it can be as simple as a webpage, as a list of hot topic issues. It's like, why did the school board extend the school calendar to June 25th? There's an, there's a fairly logical explanation there that students end up just throwing off their hands, being like, this makes no sense, when really there is some amount of explanation we can do. Same with school start times, same with APIB testing fees. It can be very, we can take simple steps that wouldn't actually take much work to compile and put up, but would be very useful to the student population informing. And in the same way, we can set up tools to really harness student input on a variety of issues that come up throughout the year. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ash. Dr. Garza, you wanna?
Well, that was quite surpris, I appreciate your comments. I wasn't expecting to speak, but I will tell you that I really liked your ideas. Well, I think there's always better ways that we can make sure that our students have a voice because in probably many of the things that we do and our decisions, they're the groups that are most impacted, right? Our students and our, and our employees. So, I'm committed to doing that. I like your ideas. I do think that I agree with you on the APIB fees. I think my suggestion on that is stay tuned on that. I think there will be some changes down the road that I know the board will consider that I think will be well received. It has been a challenging budget year, but I know that that is a priority and something that we believe needs to be addressed as well. So, thank you for your comments, and I always love to hear your perspective, the students' perspective, so thank you.
Okay, thank, thank you, Dr. Garza. Next, we have, we have a confirmation, I'm sorry, we have action items, two action items. Before I go to Mrs. Smith for the first action item, let me ask whether there is any voice cloud in the audience? Is there a voice cloud? If there is, would you like to stand to be recognized? If there isn't, there isn't. All right, Mrs. Smith.
Thank you, Chairman Moon. I move that the school board accept the monitoring reports and presentation for student achievement goal two, develop essential life skills, and student achievement goal three, responsibility to the community and the world, as detailed in the agenda item.
Is there a second? Seconded by Ms. Evans. Mrs. Smith, you wanna speak on your motion?
I'm just gonna speak briefly. I think we had a wonderful presentation at our last meeting. We had a great discussion with the board, and I urge your support of the motion. Thank you.
Ms. Evans, you wanna speak on your second?
I appreciate all the information that's in this goal report, and I fully support it.
Any further discussion? If not, let me call for the vote on the motion that the school board accept the monitoring reports and presentation for student achievement goal two, develop essential life skills, and student achievement goal number three, responsibility to the community and the world, as detailed in the agenda item. All those in favor, raise your hand. The vote is unanimous. The motion passes. Thank you. Next, we have a confirmation of action taken in closed meeting. This is the portion of the meeting where the board will confirm any action regarding issues that were discussed in the closed meeting. These issues may include action taken regarding students who have been recommended for expression by the division superintendent. Board members have discussed each individual case, and at this time will make several motions to confirm the recommended action. If you could bear with me, so let me grab the agenda. Mrs. Smith.
I move to deny the school reassignment appeal of a student who possessed and used illegal drugs on school property and to confirm the disciplinary decision of the division superintendent.
I second.
Seconded by Mrs. Reed. All those in favor, raise your hand. Stork, Reed, Hines, Moon, Thirnakofax, Smith, and McElvin. Those opposing? Evans, Short, and McLaughlin abstaining? Verkop and Strauss. The motion passes. The next motion comes from Evans. Ms. Evans.
I move to deny the school reassignment appeal of a student who participated in the mob assault of another student at school and to confirm the disciplinary decision of the division superintendent.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Short. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hand. Strauss, Evans, Short, McElvin, Smith, Thirnakofax, Moon, Hines, Reed, Stork opposing? Abstention? Verkop and McLaughlin? The motion passes. We have a committee report from Mrs. Smith.
Thank you, Chairman Moon. I served as chairman- I served as chairman of a three-member hearing committee along with Mrs. Reed and Mrs. Strauss, and I move to expel a student for possession and distribution of an illegal drug on school property. Is there a second?
My second.
All those in favor of the motion? It's unanimous, the motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Smith. Now we have a consent agenda. Our adopted rules of parliamentary procedure, Robert's rules, provide for a consent agenda listing several items for approval of the board by a single motion. Most of the items listed under the consent agenda have gone through board committee review and recommendation. Documentation concerning these items has been provided to all board members and the public in advance to assure an extensive and thorough review. Items may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any board member prior to the meeting. 5.01, approve the minutes of the April 10, 2014 Regular School Board meeting. 5.02, confirm the separations for the period beginning March 1, 2014, and ending March 30, 2014, as detailed in the agenda item. 5.03, confirm the appointments and separations for the period beginning January 1, 2014, and ending March 31, 2014, as detailed in the agenda item. 5.04, adopt the policy 1254, flag rules and regulations, policy 2135, assistance to students, policy 2350, social work services for eligible students, policy 3009, challenge the library and instructional materials, policy 3406, school consortia, policy 3335, advanced academic programs, grades K through 12, policy 8010, management responsibility, capital improvements, policy 8020, architectural and engineering services, policy 8050, supervision inspection records, reports, acceptance payments, occupancy and orientation, and policy 8058, building evaluation, building renovations, and infrastructure maintenance, as detailed is in the, in the agenda item. 5.05, adopt the policy 6401, student use of FCPS network and internet resources, as detailed in the agenda item. 5.06, approve the career and technical education management system 2014 through, 2015, application for career and technical education funds, as detailed in the agenda item. 5.07, approve the 2014-2015 annual special education plan, section 611, Part B, funding application, and section 619, Part B, preschool grant application, as detailed in the agenda item. 5.08, authorize the division superintendent or assistant superintendent of facilities and transportation services to execute the storm order enhancement project contract change order on behalf of the school board, as detailed in the agenda item. And as shown on the county approved site plan to Dustin Construction, Inc., for the amount of $2,57,460. 5.09, award the contract for the multi-zone rooftop unit replacements at West Potomac High School to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, Edward Cacarian and Company Incorporated, in the amount of $551,000, and authorize the division superintendent, while the assistant superintendent of facilities and transportation services to execute and administer the contract on behalf of the school board. 5.10, award the contract for the installation and repair of playground equipment related components and playground site work to the lowest responsible, responsible bidder, and authorize the division super, Fair Oaks Construction Incorporated, and authorize the division superintendent, while the assistant superintendent of facilities and transportation services to execute and administer the contract on behalf of the school board. 5.11, appoint individuals to serve on committees, as detailed in the agenda item. Is there any objection to approving the consent agenda? Hearing and seeing the objection, the consent agenda is approved. Next, we have a new business. The following are new business agenda items. There will not be a vote tonight on these items, but action is scheduled at a future meeting. 6.01, award the contract for locker refinishing, refurbishing, and installation to the lowest responsible, responsible bidder, or bidders, and authorize the division superintendent, while the assistant superintendent of facilities and transportation services to execute and administer the contract on behalf of the school board. 6.02, award the contract for the Luther Jackson Middle School boys and girls restrooms, renovation project to the lowest responsible, responsible bidder, and authorize the division superintendent, while the assistant superintendent of facilities and transportation services to execute and administer the contract on behalf of the school board. We are moving along. We have a superintendent matters next.
Thank you, Chairman Moon, members of the board. I know that many of you have heard of the news that Fairfax County Board of Supervisors proposed a 3% transfer increase to FCPS for the fiscal year 2015 budget. This is far short of the 5.7% increase the transfer requested. While the final decision is very important, I'm confident that we will find a positive way forward. And I just want our employees to know that we are working diligently to develop solutions for balancing this budget, which will be adopted on May 22nd. We remain strongly committed to improving our employee compensation in the fiscal year 2015 budget, so as we complete this budget process, this will remain a priority. We are very grateful to the many employees, parents, community members, that came out to show their support throughout this budget process, and hope you will continue to remain involved as we finish up this budget process, and as we continue to work through our challenges in the coming months and years. On another note, The Washington Post has now made it official, we are very proud to, of our 2014 Principal of the Year and Teacher of the Year, who will be honored in ceremonies at the Post next month. Jay Pearson, the principal at Marshall High School, has been named the FCPS Principal of the Year, and he is the recipient of The Washington Post's Distinguished Educational Leadership Award. He has served as principal at Marshall High School since 2005, and has worked for FCPS for 24 years. Marshall's speech and drama teacher, Mark Kirsten, notes that Pearson successfully encourages staff members and students to make a personal connection to the school, so that everyone has a personal stake in the school community. Every individual matters, every lesson matters, and every day matters, he adds. I've heard Jay say on several occasions, this isn't just another day, rather, every day is one of opportunity. It sounds like something Jay would say. He's such a great principal. Musa Shaw is our Teacher of the Year. Shaw, Mr. Shaw is a science teacher at Carson Middle School, and he will represent FCPS in Virginia's Teacher of the Year competition, and their winner will be announced in the fall of 2014. We had the opportunity to visit Mr. Shaw in his classroom, and it was just so exciting at Carson Middle School, and the students there, it was obvious he has just a very unique and special relationship with the students, because they were equally as excited for him as we were. Mr. Shaw has also won The Washington Post Agnes Meyer Outstanding Teacher Award for Educational Excellence, which is presented annually to a teacher from each school division in the Washington metropolitan area. Nearly everyone who nominated Shaw for the 2014 Teacher of the Year Award commented on his happy and positive disposition and ability to make his students laugh and enjoy their time in his classroom, where a poster pronounces, "A day without laughter is a day wasted." "Mr. Shaw makes science amusing and interesting," says a former student. So we extend our congratulations to both Jay Pearson and Musa Shaw. We are very, very proud of both of them. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Dr. Garza. Next, we have reports. And let me start with April 23rd, the Audit Committee, Mr. Stork.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We met and discussed a number of items, in particular, the, we had a business process turnover audit for 400 Elementary School. We had a annual plan process discussion where we agreed that we would be asking the board to defer our annual plan for the Audit Committee until September, October, because of the work that we're doing right now on the comprehensive risk assessment won't be completed until June. The board won't, we really won't have a chance to talk about that until June and July, and then as part of that, we can then make plans on how the Audit Committee and the Audit Function should work after that. We also discussed the state efficiency review recommendations, and we are in excellent shape on that in terms of meeting the conditions and terms of that review. It required us to at least 50% of the savings that the, the state recommended, or at least 50, 50% of the recommendations be adopted, and we're on track to be in the 90 percentile plus range on that. So we're looking very good on that. And we also discussed staffing. We have, we've now fully hired the additional positions that the board approved last December, and we're looking forward, and Chris Horton actually starts on Monday, so we're looking forward to being fully up to speed with that. And obviously, we have a lot of training orientation to do, but I think we all should be very pleased with how far the, the work, our audit work has come. So, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Stork. That's very exciting. Next, we have public engagement, Ms. Hines.
Yes, we got, I, I think I'm going to report on public engagement later as well. Why don't I do it all now? How's that? Because I'm twice off the schedule.
Please, please, you can do that now.
Okay, just basically, Public Engagement Committee met yesterday morning, and then we had a partial work session on public engagement yesterday afternoon. We were able to talk, to talk through the Blueprint for Change, the Start Times Public Engagement Plan with, with staff, and we had a good conversation about that, and I feel like we're ready to go ahead on that. We will continue our work session next Monday night.
Thank you, Ms. Hines. We had full day work sessions on April 23rd with the pair of Hines, Ryan McElvin as meeting managers, and let me call Mr. McElvin.
Thank you, Mr. Moon. So I'm going to report out on the first piece of our marathon session yesterday, which was the Blueprint for Change. That work session brought us to three decision points, moving forward with changes to high school, middle school, and elementary school start times. The decisions were as follows. First, we will not be phasing in the proposal. We plan to implement it whole hog. Number two, we determined four, that we would take four options out to the community. And the third decision was which options those would be. And if you go to our Board Docs webpage, you will note that those are plans two, three, four, and high school late. I will note that the press has done a pretty poor job at reporting this. For those of you who did not see the CBS report, they, they reported from George Mason High School, and talked to parents and students at George Mason High School, which starts at 8:19 a.m. So the responses they got were kind of strange, but anyway, I will cut, cut this short and hand it over to Ms. Hines for the rest of the day.
Thank you. Mr. McElvin, did you mention that The Washington Post got the story wrong as well? And maybe we should, The Washington Post, are we going to correct that? Okay, good. Because they reported that actually we adopted the four recommended proposals by the consultants, and actually, we only adopted three of them and then added the high school date. So hopefully, there'll be a correction on that. Okay, our other work sessions yesterday included a discussion of, a facilities discussion on the capital improvement plan. I want to thank staff and FPAC for all their work on that. We, we have some next steps on that. We are, we were in the process of giving staff some direction on what we'd like to see changed in the capital improvement plan, and they will come back to us. We also had a work session on our strategic plan, public engagement part of our strategic plan. Want to thank Hank Jometro and Ekra for helping us out, and Dan Paris, who also has been instrumental in working very hard on that. We discussed the public engagement plan, and we gave some input on the survey, which will go out to, to everyone, broken down by different groups. So that was a meaningful and helpful conversation.
Thank you. Mrs. Smith?
Thank you. We had a governance committee update, and we talked about change in membership of our Human Relations Advisory Committee, and that will be coming up in the future for new business. We also talked about goals for the board. We had talked about this at our July retreat, and so we're going to work going forward to help ourselves be better advocates for things in education that we want to achieve. So we'll be working on that. And we didn't have any recommended changes now for the OEs and instruction and learning environment, but those will be coming up again in May. Thank you.
Ms. Thirnakofax?
I was reporting out on the forum where we were streamlined and focused, and we got to four topics today. The first one we talked about was outreach by our board to the faith community, where we hope to build a more formal relationship at the board level with faith leaders, as they are an important cultural connection to our families. After a short discussion, we agreed to refer to the Public Engagement Committee for further review. The second topic that we discussed was the length of the term for our appointees to the citizen advisory groups, from two years to one. And after a brief discussion, the board concurred that this was indeed a good idea, and that change would be noted in, in our updated governance manual. The third topic we talked about was creating a school board, Board of Supervisors Joint Committee on Strategic Budgeting. We felt that we would try to foster a constructive and collaborative budget development process that builds trust by forming this group. After much discussion, we decided to craft a motion on developing this joint committee, and this would be presented and considered as part of our budget approval process at our May 22nd meeting. And lastly, we discussed the creation of another joint board, the School Board Board of Supervisors Joint Committee on Achieving Home Rule. Now, this discussion, and you can listen to all of these discussions on our website, it took many different terms, and at this time, Mr. Velkopf is going to revisit this based upon our discussion and bring it back to our board for further discussion.
Thank you, Ms. Thirnakofax. Next, we have a board matters. Just want to remind the board members that this is the time we can really take our time to be able to get out of meeting late. So with them, Mrs. Strauss.
Thank you. I would like to recognize Herndon High School. I was invited to a wonderful breakfast meeting this morning, where we honored 80 students who have been nominated by their teachers, who have turned themselves around, who have overcome unusual challenges, and have improved their academic performance and their success. And this is something annually that Herndon High School does, and I think it's an absolutely wonderful idea. It also builds on the fact that Herndon High School is a, has a special program called Kids at Hope. And there were two pledges that we gave this morning. The students said, "I am a kid at hope. I am talented, smart, and capable of success. I have dreams for the future, and I will climb to reach those goals and dreams every day. All Hornets," as Herndon students, "are capable of success, no exceptions." And we adults said, "As an adult and a treasure hunter, I am committed to search for all the talent, skills, and intelligence that exist in all children and youth. I believe all Hornets are capable of success, no exceptions." We heard a wonderful speech by Prince Bedo, who was a junior, and he was a student who was beginning to become a little lax in his studies, he acknowledged. But he said his teachers would not allow him to fail. And they made him stay, they made him work, and he said, "You know, I turned myself around because my teachers would not let me fail." He said, "I had to work harder." He was wonderful. So congratulations, Herndon High School. This is truly a community that cares, a community that pushes cajoles, drags their children across the finish line, but they do it with love and expectation. So it was wonderful to celebrate these 80 students. Great work, Herndon High School.
Thank you. Ms. Evans?
Yes, I'd like to, a little bit belatedly, congratulate Falls Church High School Orchestra and Chorus. A month ago, they were at the World Strides Heritage Performance Festival in New York City, and they, led by, the orchestra led by strings teacher Drew Lizzowski competed on stage, and they came home with a gold rating and first place in their division. Chorus, led by music teacher Anna Robinson, they came home also with a gold rating for their performance. In addition, Falls Church High School senior Mark Gianopoulos, Gianopoulos, I'm sorry, Mark, he received the Maestro Award for the outstanding solo. So congratulations to the staff and students at Falls Church High School for that outstanding accomplishment. I'd also like to highlight an unusual week going on this week at Stewart High School. This is Shine On Week at Stewart High School in memory and in commemoration of Casey Schulman, who was a wonderful young woman who died tragically on December 1st, 2012. They are, Stewart-
They are, Stewart, she is, was a graduate of Stewart High School, and her parents have organized this week as well as scholarships in her name. And one of the unusual features of this week is that students are being asked to think about kindness. Casey was an unusually kind person, in addition to being a top student and just a wonderful young woman. So students are nominating each other for acts of kindness, and this is something that's going to be taken into account when deciding on the scholarships. Some of the events this week, they're playing music at passing time, lively music, and passing out yellow bracelets to commemorate the week. Students are complimenting each other. There's a bulletin board where people are talking about what they're thankful for. So it's an all-week effort just to remind people to be kind to one another. And tomorrow, one of their features is a high-five and a hug booth. So I think it's a wonderful week and certainly a fitting commemoration of Casey Schulman.
Mrs. Schurz?
Let's see, we've got, first of all, this is the second year in a row that we've had a meeting on the night or on the day of the Robinson Art Pyramid. So Ms. Goddard, can we make sure I don't miss it again? Because that's one of my favorite things. So I hope that the Robinson Pyramid Art Show went off beautifully today, and I was very sorry to have missed that. That is one of my favorites. West Springfield High School, I cannot thank enough Mark Greenfelder, Jeff Plattenberg, Kevin Snead, and especially my friend Brady Rousch for the series of meetings that we've had here recently on the renovation plans for West Springfield High School. Their patience with my Sharpie pen that I took to some of the drawings. Principal Greenfelder and I met with them yesterday extensively, and we're planning a public meeting for a reveal and for the initial architectural drawings, and I think it's just amazing, as some of the adults in the building who were students, like Principal Greenfelder himself said at the end, "You're not even gonna recognize the building." And I think a lot of really good work in the Facilities Department is going into this. It's a long-awaited renovation, and I think we're finally seeing traction. So that's wonderful. This week, I was pleased to be a guest speaker again at the National Geospatial Intelligence Agency for a very special program we have in Fairfax County. Right now, we only have it at two high schools, and I see Dr. Presidio over there. I'm hoping that we can certainly expand this program. It's a special program right now that's happening at Lee High School and South Lakes High School that is a co-curricular enrollment for seniors in GIS and intelligence, where they can get college credit. It's a co-curricular program hosted by James Madison University. Go Dukes! And I was actually able to stay and see some of the student presentations where they used public information through the GIS information provided through NGA. And notably, there were two program deliveries, one where a pair of students geocoded gun sales throughout the Commonwealth of Virginia with the assumption that gun sales and the proclivity for increased gun sales would translate to increased violent crimes. And in fact, they found no correlation. So I found that one particularly interesting. It really upended their initial assumptions. Another pair of students presented a program where they geocoded all over Commonwealth of Virginia motor vehicle accidents relating to speeding and alcohol, and found a proclivity, not unsurprising, around college/university campuses. And they were really challenged, and I hope that we get a lot more, I hope we see a press release on this on the FCPS website, I know we haven't seen this yet, and really acknowledge these students who I think are at the cutting edge of elevating STEM involvement and STEM awareness, and particularly, the large number of young ladies that were involved in this program, I was particularly proud of. And then lastly, I just want to acknowledge once again our interim Deputy Assistant Superintendent, Dan Paris, and the work that we're, you know, hardworking master calendar group doing behind-the-scenes, trying very diligently to come up with a schedule that, that at some point, we'll be able to take more publicly, working on some of the issues relating to the snow days, the late-year calendar that we're experiencing, half-day Mondays, which I'm desperate to get rid of, and teacher workload, most notably particularly in the elementary. So I just want to thank him again for the amount of time that he's dedicating in all of the meetings. Thank you.
Ms. McElvin?
Thank you, Mr. Moon. I'm looking forward to joining both you and Mrs. Strauss at the Langley Relay for Life this Saturday evening. I'm also going to be Master of Ceremonies at the South Lakes High School Band on the Run on Saturday morning. You're welcome to come out and run, Ms. Heinz. Happy to run with you always. I hope everyone had a great spring break. I know I was busy catching up on work, and I hope everyone else did the same.
Mrs. Smith? Ms. Danakovacs?
This week, I attended Student Services Advisory Council at Edison High School, where counselors, students, and administrators meet to talk about student wellness, college and career readiness, and really bring forth ideas for improvement and changes to the school system. So we had a wonderful and robust discussion. I thank you all for asking me to come and including me a part of this productive work. And I may have committed some of us, I'm not certain, but they have a wonderful thing going on on May 17th, and it is the same time as our Resiliency Workshop at Hayfield, and Hayfield is a five-minute drive from Edison, and they are having a Got Hope Walk-a-thon. And I told them I would try to get some of my school board members to come during that time to try and come to that walk-a-thon, as it is part of the same theme that we are talking about that's so important for us, student wellness and resiliency. So I would hope maybe some of you can join me on that. That's at Edison High School. And yesterday, I visited Mount Vernon High School, where I attended an event showcasing our career and technical education classes, and there were representatives there from the National Association of Career and Technical Education, as well as a representative from the U.S. Department of Education. And the students there were outstanding. I congratulate the Principal Nardis King and her outstanding CTE staff for showing the guests the amazing things that our students are learning through these classes. And I also just wondered, as a parent, I was almost hoping that, I was the only parent there that, you know, and I don't have children at that school, but most of the other people were administrators, and, but as a parent, I was thinking, I wish other parents could have been invited to this event, because these children were so phenomenal and so outstanding, and they were poised and professional, and their parents would have been proud if they would have seen them. And finally, I want to say thank you to all of the administrative personnel who contribute to the success of our school system. We truly appreciate you and all that you do, as this is Administrative Professionals Week, and we on the board look forward to sharing lunch with our school board staff tomorrow. That we pay for.
Mrs. McElvin?
A couple things. First of all, I want to share with my colleagues that yesterday's work session on our later high school start times, I think, was some of the best dialogue I've really enjoyed in being on the board with each of you. I know that there was a diversity of perspectives on certain things, but I think that we really demonstrated our commitment and our desire to really help this school system do its very best for its students. And for the public who was not able to watch the work session, I wanted just to highlight some of the things that were most important in my takeaway. To hear the Children's National Medical Center experts alert us to the fact that sleep deprivation is a public health epidemic at the national level, that the statistics in Fairfax County alone is that 3% of our students are only getting their requisite hours of sleep, that over 56% of our students are getting less than six hours' sleep a night. These are very real statistics. Given that we know the overwhelming scientific evidence that the adolescent brain is on a different circadian rhythm, that they are on a different sleep cycle, switching our high school start times will help these students to not only get more sleep, but equally important, they will be more alert in the morning to learn, and that is our primary goal in this school system. It was also noted that this will not be a cure-all. We have other issues that affect the successful learning of our students. That includes our homework loads, that includes the extracurricular and sports practices, the length of time our students spend at those, the social media distractions, as well as the effects of blue light screens that come from the computers, and how it's important that we work together as a community, parents, educators, and our students, to look at all of these issues that impact sleep, not only for our children, but even what we model for our children with ourselves. And I know in talking to some of my colleagues with a 10-hour work session yesterday and then another marathon this evening, and I look at our staff, Dr. Garza and her team, it's been a long week coming off of a restful spring break, so I think we're looking forward to the weekend. But I did want to just really, again, thank everybody for their continued efforts on such an important topic, and most especially to Ms. Sandy Evans and to Phyllis Payne. As a fellow community advocate, I don't want to come to tears, but I know what you two have done to work tirelessly on something like this, when it's really not even about your children anymore. They've aged out, they've grown, and yet you've remained dedicated because you care so deeply about something that we know is the right thing to do. So thank you for your steadfast efforts. I look forward to the continued work as we bring this to the community. I'm glad it was noted that, in very correct fashion, because as my colleague, Ms. Smith, pointed out, it is so important that our public know that we want your input, that these are just options. We need to know what works for your families, and we look forward to taking that information so that we will hopefully find, as I termed it yesterday, the Goldilocks Challenge, you know, not too early, not too late, but hopefully just right. The other thing that I wanted to say is that it was very powerful hearing the Brown versus Board of Education resolution this evening. I grew up in Northern California, and I will confess, I was born in 1967. So my own experience growing up, I really didn't have the East Coast influence nor the timeframe in my life to appreciate how powerful that time was in our country. But I was a history major, and so when I came to Philadelphia and spent time in college, I really started to have a real tangible sense of what this country has gone through, and I was just very proud of our system to be honoring such an important anniversary. Also, on a happy note, for my colleagues who didn't see this, Emily Cox, she's a Woodson senior, and she just completed her first Boston Marathon. But what makes it notable is she was the youngest female runner in the race this year. And the Washington Post did a wonderful story on her about her dedication and commitment, and it's really a remarkable story about this young lady. She ran so well, she's qualified again for next year. I also wanted to again emphasize what my colleague Tammy Darren at Kofax discussed, the summit that we will have on teen stress, fostering wellness and resiliency on May 17th. Shout-out to Dr. Dockery, and again to Dr. Garza, with everything that you do to help our school system every day, that you have taken this on and made this a priority at the end of this school year, is very powerful to me and the Woodson community, and also, I think, for all of us parents in this school system. So thank you. I know it's been a lot of work, but I am so thrilled that you recognize the value of this. I also would be remiss that over the spring break, I'm not sure how many of our families saw, but the Washington Post did an in-depth story on the losses we've had at Woodson over the last three years. And it was very powerful coverage. The Washington Post handled it with extreme sensitivity, but they did also put it right there on the front page, and I hope that helps our larger community here in the Washington region understand that it's not just something at Woodson, but it is something that we all need to understand about teen depression, stress, and the effects of suicide on our families, and especially to our Woodson families who spoke so bravely. Thank you. And especially to Gail Griffith and her son tonight. This is the one-year anniversary of when we lost Ethan Griffith at Woodson, and many in the community honored him today, simply for the fact that he is remembered. And finally, I forgot to mention, I know Chairman Moon and Ms. Evans would not forgive me, Ms. Emily Cox not only finished the Boston Marathon, but then headed straight up to Brown for her admitted student acceptance reception. So with that, we get to go out early tonight.
Okay. I'm still hoping to be able to get out early, so...
Sure, he says it before I talk. That's nice. Well, I am, I am looking forward to this Saturday afternoon. The South Gate Community Center in Reston is having their Community Day. If you can make it, please do. It's from 2:00 to 5:30-ish in the afternoon. I will be helping to recognize some of our Reston students who are being given an award for their academic achievements that afternoon, so I'm really looking forward to that. It's a great event. Also, and I should have mentioned this as part of Public Engagement Committee report, our student leadership group will have their mock work session next Monday night at 6:00 PM at Gate House. I hope as many school board members as possible can make it. Our student leaders chose mental wellness and suicide prevention as the topic that they want to address in their mock work session, and I'm very proud of them for doing that. Obviously, it's extremely important to everyone, including them. Next Saturday on the 3rd, I'll be, I don't know if I'll, I'll be participating in the Courtney Schilling 5K at Forest Edge Elementary School. It honors a beloved teacher who passed away much too young, and for several years now they have continued to honor her, which I think is wonderful. I also want to thank a small group of faith community leaders in Vienna who approached me only about three weeks ago to sit down and meet with them. They had some time and some capacity, and they wanted to know what they could do to help the school system. They asked me, "What's our greatest need?" And I said, "Well, kindergarten readiness," you know, "if you want to help us in the community." And so in that short time, I, a couple days ago, got an email from them where they have already set up a plan, working with Cunningham Park Principal Becky Baneig and the parent liaison there, Helen Cortez. They've also pulled in Vienna Presbyterian Church and the town of Vienna to set up a program where, for early education, pre-K education for children, and ESOL education for their parents. And I'm just, I'm amazed at how much work they did in a short time. I'm really excited about it, so I wanted to thank them. No one has, I guess Dr. Garza said something about the budget, but no one else has, and I feel like I'm sort of breaking Trump here, if that's the right bridge term, but I just wanted to say a few things. You know, I do feel like the Board of Supervisors unfortunately has decided to continue a pattern of chronic underfunding of our school system. I don't think we should make any mistake about that, that this is not a glad week for our school system. We put $97 million in cuts on the table, and we will have to find even deeper cuts. And that is disappointing, but I refuse to be discouraged. We start from here. We take our lessons and our many friends, old and new, and we go forward unified, and we go forward right now. We will do all we can to protect our children and our employees. We will continue to empower and encourage the advocates for children, all the advocates for children and families in this community to stay engaged. The fiscal year 2016 budget conversation starts now. I think we need to continue to give voice to the consequences of chronic underfunding, and that needs to start now, and it needs to continue. We don't wait several months before we start talking about that. And I think we will take even, as a board, we'll take even greater initiative and more deeply engage ourselves as leaders in this community on behalf of our 180,000 students and their families, our 25,000 employees and their families, and all Fairfax County residents who benefit from having a really strong public school system. To those who organized and advocated and gave of themselves...
To those who organized and advocated and gave of themselves, thank you. I was so proud to see the efforts. It made me proud, and it made me hopeful. So this is just this, in a way, I feel like this was the beginning of a new kind of conversation. I feel like the tenor and the tone has changed. I want, that is due very much to our superintendent, Dr. Garza. Thank you so much for all you did to help us turn the conversation around. We're not quite there yet, but I feel like we're having a different sort of conversation, which is very important. So, you know, I, I feel certain that we go forward unified and more passionate and certain of our mission.
Ms. Reed.
You really want us to filibuster here? Keep talking and talking? I too wanted to thank everybody who came out to support school funding. I really felt like we were all on the same team, and that was truly very important. And our work, of course, is not done yet, but you all know how important you are to us, you employees out there, and we're going to do our very best to honor our commitments to you. Wanted to mention to those of you who hadn't heard about the U.S. News &amp; World Report came out with its ranking of schools. We have, in Virginia, we have eight out of the top 10 high schools, and TJ is number four in the United States. Also wanted to mention that I participated in a panel today on the future of education in the United States at Leadership Fairfax event. I'm an alumni of Leadership Fairfax and enjoyed participating in the panel, and the audience was really people from leaders throughout different sectors. So it was very interesting to, to talk about that. Mr. Stork joined me on the panel, as well as Supervisor Harity and former school board member, Stu Gibson. So we had quite a very good discussion, and there were some very good questions, and I felt like we could have talked a long time, but we talked a lot about the current state of affairs and the many barriers that we're facing, and how we really are ready to kind of take a step and be a leader on some of these issues rather than being passive. So, so I felt that that was, that was very good. Last but not least, I did want to mention, speaking of the budget, reminding people that, as I said, our work is not finished now that we know basically how much is in our checkbook, assuming the General Assembly passes a budget here sometime soon. Coming up next, well, of course, on Monday, we have our work session. The, the, let's see what happens next. Official transfer is Tuesday. May 8th, the, we, the approved budget will be presented as new business. May 13th, we'll hold public hearings on the budget, 14th if needed. I don't know how many people are going to be signing up, but certainly weigh in if you feel the desire to do so. A budget work session on May 15th, and adopting the 2015 approved budget on May 22nd, and then the fiscal year officially begins on July the 1st. So again, thank you all who have been active participants in the budget process this year. You did make a difference. I think we all recognize that you came out, you were listened to, the supervisors took note that when there were meetings being held, that a lot more people were talking about schools perhaps than in the past. So even though I think expectations maybe were a little bit higher, it is what it is, and we'll get through this together. And I hope everybody had a chance to rest over spring break. We're in the final homestretch now. Thank you.
Ms. McAlpin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yesterday, April 23rd, was the 450th anniversary of the birth of William Shakespeare. And since we are on Channel 21, I would like to read an excerpt from Robert McNeil's book, The Story of English. If you cannot understand my argument and declare it's Greek to me, you are quoting Shakespeare. If you claim to be more sinned against than sinning, you are quoting Shakespeare. If you recall your salad days, you are quoting Shakespeare. If you act more in sorrow than in anger, if your wish is father to the thought, if your lost property has vanished into thin air, you are quoting Shakespeare. If you have ever refused to budge an inch or suffered from green-eyed jealousy, if you have played fast and loose, if you have been tongue-tied, a tower of strength, hoodwinked or in a pickle, if you have knitted your brows, made a virtue of necessity, insisted on fair play, slept not one wink, stood on ceremony, danced attendance on your lord and master, laughed yourself into stitches, had short shrift, cold comfort, or too much of a good thing, if you have seen better days or lived in a fool's paradise, why be that as it may? The more fool you, for it is a foregone conclusion that you are, as good luck would have it, quoting Shakespeare.
Thank you, Ms. McAlpin. Would you like to say hello to all board members? Mr. Stork?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't know if I can top that, but I don't think I'll even try, given it's Shakespeare. So just a couple notes I wanted to make. First and foremost, we have one of my favorite all-time experiences coming up this Saturday. I know Mr. Moon will be joining me there, and I'm hoping that many of you will, will, I guess, find the time. And if you're not sure what I'm talking about, it's the 6th Grade All-County Chorus, and it is absolutely the most inspiring, joyful, celebratory events that I go to during the school year. So community members, I know that there may be a little bit of room. You better get there early. It starts at 3:00. I know that easily by 2:45, it's pretty full and hard to get in, but it is absolutely one of the most amazing, you know, chill, sending experiences you'll have as part of Fairfax County schools, so. And I also want to recognize at Hollins Meadows Elementary School, which has been recognized nationally, the first lady has been there, has, celebrates Earth Day this Saturday, and looking forward to being there, and I'm sure all of you would be welcome to come. I know many of you have been before, Ms. Schultz and others, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stork, for mentioning a 6th Grade All-County Chorus. In my 15 years as a board member, I think I might have gone there like 14 times, and I will certainly be there on Saturday. It's wonderful to see as close to 1,000, 1,000 singers with about 4,000, 5,000 parents and community members just filling the entire gymnasium of Hayfield Secondary School. Hope to see many of you on Saturday. With that, this meeting is adjourned.
I take umbrage. Mr. Stork, did you just say I went to a, a...
Hollins Meadows.
A what?
Hollins Meadows.
Hollins Meadows, yes. But for what? Not for Earth Day. I guarantee you it was not.